Yeah, you know, I'd like to, you know, work together if the city can do something that would be great whatever, you know.
Hi, young, on that sip, shop and stroll kicks in, I'm right.
And you know about the Atlanta? She said, we're talking.
Yeah.
She said, why don't you take care of those of your people? I said, you know what, racist. I said, why don't you go take care of Spears?
Counsel, is everybody ready? Counsel, are we ready?
Ready.
Okay. Michael, we're ready to go. Okay, I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Elgin City Council on this fourth day of May 2021 at 7:00 P.M. We'll go to roll call, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Brasher.
Brasher here.
Gonzalez here.
Ramon is here.
Pinson here.
Vega here.
Prince here.
Ibis here.
Dennis here.
Let the director reflect, we have a quorum and all council members are present. Next, we'll go to invocation. Councilmember Gonzalez, if you'll lead us in the invocation.
Dear Lord, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community and for those persons in the community that we represent. Give us unity of spirit and let us work as a team in combining ideas for a great outcome. May we have a spirit of friendliness and caring in this room and work together to accomplish our shared mission, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay, full stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do the Texas flag pledge. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible. Next on the agenda is public comments, I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting this evening. Public comments, I'm gonna read the criteria, it says individuals may request to speak on items on the agenda and items not on the agenda by requesting to speak during the meeting and under public comment and will be required to fill out a public comment form and we have three today. You may present it along with any material handouts or information for the council to the city secretary prior to the commencement of the council meeting. Speaker comments are limited to three minutes. No formal action can be taken by the city council on items not posted on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing will allow a member of the public an opportunity to speak during the public hearing and does not require submission of a public comment form. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to an individual council member or member of staff. All speakers must limit their comments to the specific subject matter noted under the public comment form and refrain from personal attacks or derogatory comments directed at any council member, member of staff, other individual or other groups. Okay, so first off, under public comments, we'll start out with Michael Garvey. Is that Michelle or is that? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My whole life. Well, first of all, I would like to say that I personally appreciate each and every one of you for your service to this community. I know it's a sacrifice for each one of you and it is appreciated. And I imagine that this past year has been difficult for each of you as it has been for the citizens of Elgin. But I come tonight with good news for our community. After a year of COVID, we now have more information regarding this virus. I am providing to you some scientific reports which have been passed out to you regarding the ineffectiveness of masks from stopping the transference of the COVID virus. So if you would, refer to page two, item number eight, it's at the bottom of the page. This isn't, and because of time restraints, I'm only touching on a couple of this. This is an article based on CDC data that shows Texas and Florida have fewer COVID-19 cases per capita than Michigan, Pennsylvania, New York, where mask mandates and full COVID-19 restrictions are still in effect. The conclusion of the research, there is little correlation to be seen between closing businesses, enforcing social distancing and requiring people to wear a mask. And then I put the link where you can read the full article. If you would turn to the following page and look at item number nine. The number of COVID-19 deaths have been grossly overstated as determined by Geneva Bryant, Assistant Program Director of Applied Economics at Hopkins. Bryant focused on total deaths per age group and per cause of death in the United States and used this information to shed light on the effects of COVID-19. She discovered that the crude number of total deaths by all causes before and after COVID has stayed the same. And I put the link to that article for you. And then if you would look at item number 11, the CDC updated their information showing that basically 99% of the public recovers from this virus. All of this is very good news for all citizens of Elgin. And I have been notified that your ordinance 2021-11902, which required face masks, has expired. I have noticed businesses around town still have that notice up along with their face mask signage. So I am asking that all the businesses be notified of the governor's executive order number 34, which removed all restrictions requiring face masks to be worn and notify the businesses that the city ordinance has expired and have them remove their signage.
Garvey, that's three minutes, that's three minutes, so please wrap up.
Okay, we do not want to hurt our businesses or our citizens, we want to move forward and we want to stop promoting fear and that's what I'm asking you to do, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Grant Henning?
I was just gonna go back over a couple of things that we did, that you all did in the past. First of all, I want to say thank you for passing Sip Shop and Stroll, that's one of my favorite events ever in town besides Western Days and Hog Eye. But I, we do have concerns, I mentioned to Amy in the past, it's just Main Street gets so crowded during Sip Shop and Stroll. I suggested to Amy way back when I attended my first few, to maybe close two or three blocks of Main Street because the traffic going through there and all the parked cars, it just seems really dangerous to have it in the situation that we have it. Amy tried, we put cones down the middle, they put cone down, down the middle of the street to try to create some awareness of pedestrians, but it just seems very dangerous. So that's just one suggestion, maybe lower the speed limit on Main Street. And also on Main Street, please have our police enforce the truck route law. I mean, we're talking about tonight for a couple more streets, but it, they're up and down Main Street all day long. I mean, I know businesses and people that live on it see them all day, so if y'all can enforce that. And next, the, we had to do virtual council last meeting because of voting. So I would suggest, since this is now the new council chambers, to maybe move voting to either the rec. Senator, the school, the church, so it won't interfere with y'all's procedures anymore. So just a recommendation to recommend to the county that y'all want to move it to a place that doesn't impact y'all. Or us as citizens to get to see your lovely faces on a Tuesday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a public comment. This is from Deb Warman. Says, dear Mayor Ramon is and Elgin City Council members, I'm a resident I'm a resident of Elgin and submitting comments as a private citizen and in this case, I do not represent any other entity but my personal opinions. I appreciate the mayor and councilman Gonzalez's response to my previous emails and to the city police, city detective and code management staff time and a previous vandalism complaint that I filed. Thank you for your interest in preserving the Elgin Old Latin Cemetery. The reason for this comment is because I was witness to the flooding of graves at the cemetery on May 1st, 2021. Why do I think the city is partially responsible, a picture is worth a thousand words? I saw and took videos of the flooding of graves. This is a multi-layered issue, there's not been caused overnight but by hundreds of neglects over the last 50 years. Since no one claims this property and there is no current survey of land, I feel each of you myself to begin to address the issues. Historical places and people matter even if they have a Hispanic name. Thank you for your time, I look forward to hearing from each of you, sincerely Debbie Warman. Please consider adding an agenda item for consideration to the Elgin City Council to consider long-term and short-term solutions to mitigate flooding issues of city park runoff into the cemetery. Solicit descendants to actively address deed and land ownership of the land. Identify entities that are able to address preservation of the cemetery. An excerpt of the current Bastrop County Historical Commission narrative follows. Please let me know if you have questions as we continue the discussion on how to preserve such a valuable piece of Elgin and Bastrop County history. No one entity can address the increased flooding of the graves, erosion and degradation of surrounding city waterways. This cemetery built on sloping ground has long been left untended and is overgrown with thick brush and trees, some of which have died and fallen, damaging grave markers. The southern portion appears to have been cleared and brushed in the last two years. Many markers have been dislodged by a combination of weather, soil and gravity or growth by trees. Some markers that were noted during the previous undated surveys are no longer visible. The earliest birth date of a person buried here is October 22nd, 1830 and the earliest death date is November 8th, 1904. To reach the cemetery, turn on Second Street and Main Street in downtown Elgin, go west on Second Street toward the Elgin Water Tower. The city cemetery and the Elgin Old Latin Cemetery are both together, only a fence separates them. As required here, here's my personal contact information. And Ms. Warman provided two pictures as well, thank you. Okay, moving on on the agenda, we're gonna go to presentation and the first thing we have under presentation is the proclamation National Historic Preservation Month. And I am very happy and very honored to read this proclamation. It reads as such, it's the National Historic Preservation Month proclamation, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for communities across the nation for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals and groups in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of heritage that has shaped us as a people including locally, the Elgin Main Street Board, the Elgin Historical Association, the Elgin MLK Scholarship Committee, the Mary Christian Burleson Foundation and the Bastrop County Historical Commission. And whereas the Elgin Main Street Board partners with organizations throughout the community to implement an award-winning downtown revitalization program including the Hog Eye Festival, Sip Shop and Stroll, Small Business Saturday, Home for the Holidays, marketing, pain and dumpster reimbursement programs, educational classes, networking events, promotional events and actively supports historic preservation and awareness throughout the community. And whereas downtown Elgin has its historic district with 14 city blocks of commercial buildings constructed from locally produced brick and erected from 1872 to 1947, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas Elgin is celebrating 35 years as the Texas Main Street City with more than $20 million in public and private sector reinvestment, 100 locally owned businesses and organizations and 50 apartments downtown, two active renovation projects, one new construction project and more than 23,000 volunteer hours. And whereas Elgin has been recognized annually as a nationally accredited Main Street community by the Texas Historic Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation since 1998. And whereas the Elgin Main Street Board was recognized in 2012 with the Brick of the Community Award from the Elgin Chamber of Commerce and has been recognized multiple times by the Texas Downtown Association. And whereas May is National Historic Preservation Month, co-sponsored by Elgin Main Street Board, the City of Elgin and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Elgin, do proclaim May 2021 as Historic Preservation Awareness Month and call upon the people of Elgin to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. So congratulations, very, what a wonderful, wonderful program we have going here. I'd like to present this proclamation to Teresa Machin. And Teresa, give me the year of the Main Street, recognizing the Main Street Board in this street, okay?
I'm the president now.
Okay. After reading the proclamation, you need a drink of water. Following our agenda, we go to item number seven, the city manager's report, city manager, Mattis, if you'll go please.
Thank you, Mayor, this item is for further discussion of what we've been discussing with council over the last few months about some potential of traffic and safety improvements in a few different locations of town. Council is well aware that this particular area, Ramirez Road, is one that we've talked about but haven't made a final decision on. We, we did agree at the last meeting, Dr. Ordness, to extend our truck route here and to locate signs that'll, for no through trucking along Ramirez Road, but we still didn't, we still haven't quite reached a decision about what to do on South Avenue C at the intersection. But Ramirez had an idea and the city engineer and I had met with him recently out on the site and we think this is a potential solution to some of our issues out there. Rather than he just, he was mayor's ideas, I thought he just, he could, he'd be better suited to explain it.
Not to, not to throw a wrench in this, but counsel, in my opinion, before we do anything else to Ramon is Road, in my opinion, we should let the results or see the emphasis of what the no truck route would do to the street. To me, that's, if we pass that and if the truckers abide by that, that's gonna clear up a lot of congestion at that intersection where you have, where you have the four possible traffic flows meeting at one, at one location. That's just my opinion, but if we were to go with an action, this is something that I spoke with, with, having lived on Ramon is Road for many, many years and I spoke with the, some of the residents on Ramon is Road and some of the residents on Avenue C where Ramon is and Avenue C meet. The, the one common theme that everyone and including myself feel if we're gonna make a change to Ramon is Road and it, and it only has to be temporary if we make one. You know, it's, it's a, let's see how this works if we decide to make it. But that would be to stop traffic, to put bumpers up where people coming off of 1704 would not be able to turn onto Ramon is Road. In other words, you come off 1704 and if you go on to Ramon is Road, you have to follow Ramon is Road. And what that does, it eliminates one of the four confluences where the traffic meets that, that has no, that right now has no stop sign or whatever. If we, if we stop that traffic, will, Ramon is Road would still be two ways for the residents of Ramon is Road, but you will not be able to access Ramon is Road coming off of 1704. If you're heading south on, on Avenue C, there's, there's gonna be now a stop sign and you have to actually stop and take a left or take a right. Take a right onto Ramon is Road or take a left onto 1704. So you're controlling that lane. It seemed, the, the residents in the area seemed to think that that, that was a good idea because very few cars come off of 1704 and access Avenue C. Most of them come off 1704 and they're going straight out to the highway down Ramon is Road. So we think that's gonna be less impact on the community and the, and the neighborhood in general if we do go to that. Again, my, my initial impression would be let's see what, what the no truck route does to that street. And you know, in, in my mind, if we could go three months with just the no truck route and if, see if the trucks actually, you know, stop going down Ramon is Road, if that doesn't work, then my suggestion would be go to something like this. I'm open for suggestions, I'm open for comments? Yes, Forrest?
Mayor, I, I think it might be a good idea to, to wait the three months, but the citizen that came to me initially with this issue wasn't so concerned about traffic on Ramirez Road. He was mostly concerned about that intersection right there because he, he lived over there on Dumbback. And so coming in from, from that area, 1704, toward Ramon is, frequently, he would almost come head-on with somebody coming off of Avenue C. And, and so when, when people are coming off of 1704, they're trying to clear the intersection and what's in their mind is the end of Ramirez, not that intersection right there. They think that all that's controlled or they don't even see that it's there. The other issue is that the stop sign here on Ramirez, people blow through that. And so, so you've got this whole confluence here where cars are coming off 1704, not paying attention. Cars are coming up here, not paying attention. This wide, wide gap that you have, people are coming across there and nobody's paying attention. I mean, it's like driving in the shopping.
So you know that if we went to this particular scenario, the wide, wide gap would be gone. And we realized that the stop sign, people have a tendency to run on Ramon is Road. I mean, we, everyone realizes that.
Yep.
The, the one thing we're gonna do that Beau suggested, our engineer suggested, is that we put a preliminary sign before that stop sign saying stop coming up and that we actually put a stop, what word am I looking for? A stop stripe or bar on the road itself to make sure that, or at least catch people's attention better than just the one stop sign that you may or may not know was there, so.
Well, I, I think the truck route is definitely required, but I think that if we wait, we're really not addressing what the initial concern was.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, I'll, I'll add, because I know that we've talked about this for a little while. You know, that whole area, there is a sense of confusion. There was also a while back, you know, folks have been talking about this area for a while now and speeding was also an issue. And those that are not familiar with the intersection and come off 1704 trying to cut through Ramirez, speeding is often an issue just in that whole area. And I know that some earlier ideas that we talked about seemed to be a possible solution. The marks that Forrest, you made, I guess on one of the designs, may be an option. Again, their visual lines, whether people pay attention to those is always very interesting. A stop bar may be the same kind of thing, will they blow through that, time will tell. I will say though, that because we are facing some safety hazards in that area, I'm not sure how long we can wait. We did say last couple of meetings, low hanging fruit was to address one of the original issues, which is no through trucks on Ramirez. I think that's definitely going to help, I just don't know how that necessarily might address some of the other issues which, in my opinion, are safety hazards, which we may think about addressing sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you, anybody else?
Um, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you in, along with the truck routes, is it possible that we get the stop sign at Avenue C?
If, if we do the stop sign at Avenue C, we have to, we have to, that's based on blocking access onto Avenue C from 1704. Because it would, it would be, it would narrow the lane down considerably. Anybody else? So what, what am I hearing, what, what suggestions am I hearing? Are we gonna, we gonna wait a while with the, with the truck route, see what effects that has? Or, or do we feel like we need to do something, like now?
I, I feel like I, I'm okay with this plan. I prefer the other plan, but I'm okay with this plan, I think we need to execute it.
I'm sorry, what was that last part, Forrest?
I, I feel like we need to execute something, I'm okay with this. I think this is worth a try along with the truck.
This is, this is gonna make a difference in, in where you have the confluence of the four, four traffic patterns.
I, I agree sooner rather than later, I mean, we, this is the first meeting where all of a sudden it's like, well, do we wait? I thought maybe we were close to an option to make a decision soon for these other areas.
Counsel, are we, are we comfortable, yes, Tom?
Just jump in real quick.
Yes.
So we're, we're talking about this barricade here that we've talked about in this location, narrow this down to one lane of traffic, right? I think the one thing that we've mentioned too, that what we discussed with the mayor was similar to what we've done on South Avenue. We think we can do this, make it a temporary measure that we could put in place without a big expense on our part and which would preserve council's ability to frankly kind of change their mind later if it didn't work and, and at the same time, we, we would choose later to make it permanent if we decided to. I think that's one of the things, from the staff's perspective, this idea would enable us to take a shot at something that wouldn't cost a lot and.
Give us a chance to evaluate.
Change their mind later if council wants.
And I like that idea because we don't know that it could backfire, right?
Right, exactly.
That we're gonna end up with more accidents because of that.
Yes, councilmember?
I was gonna say on that same note, I kind of like the temporary and then, you know, if it creates other problems, then we can go back and correct it easily. If the other concern is, you know, really speeding and the trucks, what about a temporary speed bump? I mean, would that kind of slow down, no? Okay.
I don't know, yeah.
Oh, I was just.
I think once you lay down the speed bump, it's, it's there, it's hard to say that it's temporary.
Well, they have those.
Yeah.
They'll run over speed, just like the regular road, it's nothing.
Justin, some of the others that were around before, but I would, we start speed bumps, it's gonna.
Right, yeah, I know.
Another quick question I, I have, Tom, for you guys in, a couple of weeks ago, you thought that maybe you guys were also considering barriers there at the, at the corners, coming off 1704 and taking a sharp left, the family there at the end. Oftentimes, you do see the cars piling into that ditch, so some sort of, not, it's not a barrier, I guess it's a guardrail, right?
Or a post of some kind, yeah, we, we, we heard that from the mayor and some of the residents who were out there as well is, I think in, in kind of all these locations here and, and back here that there's clear evidence of people cutting this corner too tight and crushing the, the culvert, things like that. So, yeah, we need to put those up regardless because it's damaging our, our infrastructure in that area. But yes, that would be all part of this same project.
Counsel, are we good on directing staff to go ahead and make this as a temporary project and, and will, will we evaluate the effectiveness of it?
Yes.
Yes, can we, given where we've been on that, can we get a vote?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, to pass this as presented.
So low.
Okay, counsel, a motion made by councilmember Pinson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Brasher. The vote goes, councilmember Pinson?
Pinson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Prince, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brasher, yes. Alaric, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Ramon is, yes, motion passes.
Let's keep you on there. Next, I just wanted to mention, good counsel, a quick update on our continuing evolving response to the COVID pandemic. As council's aware, we've continued to, over the last six months or so, lessen our restrictions as it relates to city buildings and property. You have a copy of my memorandum that speaks to this issue in detail. But the main points we want to share tonight is that we intend to reopen, almost completely reopen, city buildings and facilities starting on Tuesday, May eleventh. It'll be next Tuesday, a week from today. I think the second paragraph up here on the left-hand column is kind of the underlying principle that the staff has utilized in looking forward on this, how we can reopen facilities and get back to quote unquote normal. And that is we will continue to require face coverings wherever Plexiglas barriers or social distancing is not possible. We will continue to lessen those restrictions. And obviously, the main concern there continues to be the public library and the rec center. As we have a lot of interaction with a lot of different people from a lot of different locations. So in order to operate in an overabundance of caution for the health of the general public, we want to continue to ask people to continue to adhere to the general principles of face coverings and social distancing. We think as meetings continue, our public meetings, openness of City Hall, again, the goal will be to require face coverings where social distancing can't be accomplished. Tonight's meeting, for example, the meeting we had last night, we didn't necessarily feel like, as long as we didn't have more people than this in the room, we would necessarily have to compel people to wear face coverings. And so some of that, as far as our public meetings and gatherings go, will still be a little bit of a judgment call based on who's in attendance and how many people we have there. But we think we can get back to normal. Where again, the library will be open, but limited to a number of patrons in the building at one time. But as an example, for City Hall, for the police station, we have Plexiglas coverage. Staff in the building won't be required to wear face coverings because we completely cause a separation between the public visiting that building and the staff. Same with the police station. Public can come into the lobby there whenever officers interact directly though with citizens. They'll continue to wear face coverings. But again, it's our goal to try to get our facilities reopened and not have any restrictions. But we feel it's appropriate that we continue to do these in some locations. City parks should be pretty much back to normal, open facilities available for private rentals. One change that I mentioned is that the Fleming Center during this time has, over the last year, as you know, has actually changed in use. It doesn't really have to do with COVID, the fact that we now occupy most of that building with offices. So we're converting that to basically we have the front room. What do we call that room, Amy?
The grand hall.
The grand hall, sorry. That helps us charge more if we call it that. So, but that room will still be available to the public and private rentals on evenings or weekends. But the rest of the time, the building will be occupied by city staff. We can, we'll use that room for city functions and trainings. But that building will be limited that way moving forward. But doesn't really have anything to COVID. That has to do more with our needing office space. The other thing we wanted to mention in that regard is the swimming pool. We're still trying to get the swimming pool back and open on June first. But frankly, we're experiencing some of the same issues you're hearing in the private sector of getting people that want jobs. I assume that being the lifeguard at the swimming pool would be a pretty cool, good job for a high school kid. But we certainly haven't gotten that response so far. So we're gearing up to be open at the pool on June first. But we're really concerned about, that's wholly predicated on the assumption that we'll be able to hire enough lifeguards to do that. So it's a concern, but again, kind of a separate concern from pandemic response. And then we'll continue to urge our staff to utilize safety protocols wherever they can. We want to keep them healthy. Want to make sure our interactions with the staff, with the public are appropriate and healthy as well. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. This is mainly just for an update for council to know what our plans are.
So next Tuesday, next Tuesday, we open back up basically.
That's right.
So can we get a consensus on whether around the dais here that we need to wear face coverings or not? I mean, we have a fortress of Plexiglas here and, you know, we're fairly separated. And is it still necessary?
Well, again, I would just say that, again, like any of these, I think we'd want council's input if there's a strong feeling amongst the majority. But in that sense, I would say under our rules, because we have these coverings, that we're fine not, obviously, Mayor and I think that, we're fine not to wear masks once we're sitting at these places. And that's what we'd tell the plan commissioner or anybody else utilizing this room. We'll still keep these up for a while. But yes, I think it conforms to how we're intending to move forward for anybody to sit here and not have to wear a face covering. Thank you.
And counsel, I hope you understand that it's, you're doing what you feel comfortable. This Plexiglas was put in for the reason to give us an option really. And you do what you feel is comfortable.
Okay, there's not any more on that. I'll jump ahead. Just wanted to mention under our activity report, that obviously council's aware that we had a council election over the weekend and will be seating three new council members in the coming days. Based on the preliminary results, I should say, that we've been provided. The election results are, will be certified on May tenth, that we're told. And the deadline for canvassing the ballots is May eleventh. So we're actually going to have to, that won't require a council meeting, but we're going to be reaching out to some of y'all to, we'll need at least two council members to come in and help us canvass the ballots on May eleventh. Then when that occurs, after the canvassing of the ballots, whatever new members, the new members that'll come on council, at that point, will be able to take the oath of office and they'll take their seats. At this point, their first scheduled meeting would be on May eighteenth. And I guess that's all I had, Mayor, unless there's any general questions for me, from anybody?
Anybody have any questions for Tom? If I can get Councilmember Pinson and Councilmember Gonzalez up front, please. Y'all did it this time. You know, if you're getting called up front, you did it. I wanted to let the council know and let everyone hear. When I was on the city council from two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, and then I got off the council, these two were already there. And here I was gone for eight years and I come back and they're still here. I can't tell you how much I appreciate both of you, all the hard work and the sacrifice and the time and, you know, the sometimes the not so easy times that we've had. And it's just you're there and we could always count on you, the city could always count on you. And I appreciate the fact that you have given so much to the city. So, and I want to present Councilmember Pinson, Mary Pinson, for eight years on the council, a nice plaque. And Councilmember Gonzalez, for eight years on the council. And just stick close here. You guys are.
Let me do my smile this time.
Mayor, may I say a few words? May I say a few words?
Yes, of course, absolutely.
I just wanted to congratulate Juan Gonzalez and Mary Pinson as well. I feel like this whole time, we've been a council that has been, for the most part, very much together, very much on the same page, all working in the same direction. And I would hope the same as we continue on in the future. Mary's been my partner in crime for the last seven, eight years. And I think it says a lot, you know, we definitely had some of the same concerns. I think there was maybe one or two times in the last eight years that we did not vote the same, but we always agreed on the principles of everything. And I appreciate your partnership as well as just your encouragement, your support certainly over the years, as well as just your interest in our neighborhood, which I know will remain. And regardless of where we are in a year or two, we live in that neighborhood and it's very important to us. So I appreciate it and I continue to congratulate you. And I hope that we can continue to work together on issues that are important to the neighborhood. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Y'all were awesome.
It's really something that, I mean, you just, just something to be so proud of, both of you all. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to, on the agenda, next is the consent agenda. It says all of the items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion, one second, and one vote. There will be no separate discussions. In this particular case, we only have one item under the consent agenda. And that is the city council virtual meeting minutes. If we've had time to look that over, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion was made by Mayor Proton Brasher, seconded by Councilmember Dennis, to approve consent agenda as read. Councilmember Brasher, I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Brasher.
Fraser, yes. Adriana, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Ramita's, yes.
Pinson, yes.
Peggy, yes.
Francis, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item number one of the new business is consideration and possible action regarding projects and funding to be included in the City of Elgin twenty twenty one certificates of obligation and twenty twenty one refunding bonds program. We do have one public comment, Mr. Henneck, if you'll come up.
Down to the wire on this, almost done. I want to thank you all for all the time y'all spent. I know y'all met with the city manager and your constituents to see what's important to your people that you represent. And I want to first thank you for all that and all the time that y'all have spent listening to us and helping navigate the waters of this big decision that y'all are going to have to make at the next meeting. I just want to say, I still think it should go to a public vote. I still think the public should have a say in it. I do understand that we have some must do and I do appreciate the city manager and you all composing the must do list. I really appreciate that because it makes you see some of the workings of the city that are in dire need of assistance and money would help with that. So I appreciate that. But I do think we should have a mobility bond for different, you know, road projects, a parks bond, a public works bond for a new city hall, for the new parks. I would still against the Central Park thing because it's next to a railroad track. That really scares me with kids playing around railroad track, but that's my personal concern. But our city engineer did say that parking is a huge necessity for growing and, you know, bustress downtowns. So we're fixing to get to that point where we're going to need parking. So that section along that railroad track across from our police office could be a good parking lot as well. So think about that for future needs. I'm concerned about the utilities, our water going up eight percent. Eight point one percent is what we're estimating. Sewage going up nine point three percent. And then you also have your regular increases every year that y'all pass, between two and five percent. It's automatic increase every year for our utilities. So if you add all that up, that's a twenty percent increase in our utilities. And that's a huge increase for our citizens. I think they need to know that the twenty percent increase is going to happen. It's going to be one time for that, but then the two or five percent increase every year will continue. So I'm concerned about that. I think we should use the utility money that we do make, the couple million dollars we make for profit. I think we should reinvest that into the utilities instead of using them to finance bonds. I think we should use that money to give our staff and our police officers a pay raise instead of using it to finance more debt. City Hall, I think that can wait. As we've learned in this pandemic, we can remote work from just about anywhere nowadays. So space shouldn't be that big of an issue. And to end, you know, certificates of obligations are typically used for emergency situations. If you look at past cities and past entities that have had to issue them, it's usually for a disaster recovery. They're trying to rebuild something for tornado, flood, some issue that's happened. They're not a typical way to finance city projects. Typically, like the school district's fixing to do in November, pass bonds to finance projects. And they're loaded on by the citizens. So the school district does it that way and I really think the city needs to do it that way as well. I think that's about all we have. I am concerned about if we're purchasing new parkland. It seems like we can't maintain the parkland we have. If we knew the restrooms in the current parks, maybe we should focus on our current parks before we start adding more parkland to maintain. So it's work on all we currently have. And maybe even the restrooms at the current parks could be a private fundraising activity. It would give businesses help fund those two restrooms that need to be refurbished at the parks. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Again, item number one, consideration of possible actions regarding projects and funding to be included in the City of Elgin twenty twenty one certificates of obligation and twenty twenty one refunding bonds program. Mr. Mattis, if you'll start on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to run briefly through a few points. We have talked about this in great length. Some of you were able to join us last night at our public forum where we had an opportunity for questions and comments and the exchange of ideas that I think was really healthy. But it was a specific opportunity that would allow people to have questions answered and asked and responded to rather than be a one-way form of communication. But we did review this again, as we've talked about before. Now that we're, I think we've got this down to what is, in my opinion, reflective of where I'm estimating the most of the council to be, the must do projects. There doesn't seem to be a lot of debate on those. This screen represents some of the changes that we talked about at the last meeting that we shared last night, that we've changed, eliminated the paving, the downtown alleys, and reduced both the cost, the budget numbers for the utility line upsizing and weatherizing the water treatment plant. Obviously, we can talk about that stuff in detail if you want to. I still think that we, in my viewpoint, it doesn't seem to be a strong consensus yet about the proposed new city hall annex. But that's in general where I see, where I estimate are the current status of the CO issue to be. And that, and accordingly, again, this is not new. You saw this last time I've shared it previously, that if we are in agreement about those changes in the numbers, then we're now talking about the issue, the principal amount for the CO issue being twenty three point seven two five million. Now, as we mentioned previously, this is, one of the things I want to talk about tonight is the specific wording of the ordinance that is the legal document. And I'm going to just give you a shot at what the ordinance looks like. This is a, will be like about a thirty-two page ordinance. But this, I think, is the most pertinent section for the council and that will be the recitals and the purpose of the certificates. So I want to talk about that and break this down, just kind of give you an idea because we've talked about this from the beginning. There's a different process for what projects we talk about, what our intent is to use the funding for. And it's a different format for what the actual legal document will say, which confines us for how we can use the funds and specifies for the law for in perpetuity about how the city is able to use these funds. So, but with everything, law, lawyers, interpretations of things, the attorney general's interpretation. interpretation, the requirements, seems to make the information sometimes vary. We're able to be general and nonspecific, and then other cases, we have to be more and more specific. So this, or this language I'm showing you tonight comes directly from our bond council, also based on the assumption that we're moving forward with the projects as I just described. So, as an example, on section I, that statement, constructing, improving, equipping city park and recreation facilities, that's all we'll need to say about all the park projects we're doing. Although we've talked about it here, we have specific plans for how we'll address those projects, the ordinance itself doesn't compel the city council to do those exact projects. The second section, again, this is a very typical wording of a section, again, to give the council a wide range of discretion within certain parameters that in the future you can absorb of costs associated with overruns, you can make additions to projects, savings, you can even add projects later by having this flexibility. As long as the expenditure of these funds fall in these general categories, then the council will have the discretion to make changes as time goes on if we want to with these projects. But at the same time, as you'll see, the larger projects, the bigger money projects like County Road, need to be specifically mentioned, and that's why the wording is included in the highlighted section. That's the way it'll be. Likewise, when we get into the utility side, again, we want to, it's only in the city's best interest to provide as much flexibility down the road to continue to make these investments and capital improvements as are necessary as time goes by, but we'll specifically mention the wastewater treatment plant. Now, item four here is an item that came up in our discussion last night that got, I'm not sure I provided as clear as an answer as I needed to on this relative to the building projects. And this is where the situation can be a little bit different, as far as the AG's interpretation of how cities need to formulate these ordinances. So buildings itself, building improvements, building projects, we need to be fairly specific about what we plan to do in that regard. While we can be general in the language for park improvements, like I mentioned before, if the city hall annex and the police station renovation project are included, this is the language pretty much as general as the language as we can make. Now, what this means is that if we include these projects, if the council passes this ordinance, includes funding for these projects, then we would be somewhat limited in where we could build the city hall annex. It wouldn't necessarily have to be in the property next door, but as this language says, we would need to be, this is as general as we can be about it, that the city hall annex would be located in close proximity to the current city hall. Likewise, with the police station, that the funding would be specified in this project to expand or renovate the current police station in its current location. So in both cases, we're generally confined to these locations. We can't just say, "We're going to build a new city hall," or "We're going to build a new police station," and we can build that anywhere. Now, at the same time, including this language in the ordinance doesn't compel us to do either project. We can get into the discussion of the project, we can ultimately determine that either location isn't the right location for those projects, and that funding then can be re-diverted to other projects if we ultimately reach that decision. But what we can't do is pass this ordinance, include this funding, and then at some point later decide, "We decided we'll just build the new police station out on 290 or someplace like that." If that, we come to that conclusion, then that would require a different debt issue, a different process to go through. So I guess we talked about that a little bit last night, and I'm not sure I made it as clear as I should have, so I'll pause there for a second to make sure there's, is there any part of that you want me to expand on or talk about? All right, again, this is the language straight from the city attorney and our bond council, and you'll receive that ordinance in time. But there's a few things that I think is really important for us to stress moving forward. Again, we want to make crystal clear to everybody that any debt issue or certificates of obligation like this, based on the ordinance, have very narrow parameters for how we can ever spend the money. And specifically, it relates to this, there's not a penny of this money that can be spent on anything other than qualifying projects as delineated in the ordinance. And all the proceeds, any project we do has to be specifically approved by the city council. This isn't funds that can be used for operating funds. This isn't like the budget where the council establishes general parameters and then the staff has discretion. Every project has to be approved by the council. Every dollar spent has to be specifically approved by the council. And moving forward, that will be the case. Just in, just to make one distinction in that, we, if you recall, we passed a reimbursement resolution early in the process that said if we incur some costs, we can reimburse ourselves. So we do have a couple of projects we've already started on that we've incurred some expenses, and we'll be reimbursing the city back out of these proceeds. But still, those are projects that have been specifically authorized and approved by the city council. And when we say that, just to make it clear, crystal clear for everybody, the only way the city council ever takes any action of any kind is in a meeting, is in a meeting that, where the issue is properly listed on the agenda and voted on. So I wasn't sure, but it seemed like there was a little confusion about our discretion with the money. There is very little discretion, and that's what this process is about, is to be as specific as we can be about exactly what we're going to do with the money, at the same time, recognizing, particularly in the City of Elgin's case, where we're talking about projects that are three years ahead, that it's only in our best interest that we include some flexibility for the city council to have some discretion about to continue to do like projects that are authorized in the ordinance. I think one thing that I think most people understand, if you ever go to see a brand-new school open, and the day you're there for the ribbon cutting, there are temporary buildings outside the day they open. That's because typically, when they go to voters, the school district has to be very specific about what they're building. So oftentimes, by the time they're ready to build the project, they're handcuffed by what they can do to continue to grow. So that's why oftentimes you see new buildings that are already undersized. But, so this gives the city, which I think is, gives the council very important flexibility later to continue to do infrastructure projects like this. But again, every expenditure will always be properly authorized and approved only by the city council. So with that, I'll just keep going. There's just a few other points I want to make. I can't stress enough that we're down to, kind of coming down here to the final decision. As we've talked about before, at our next scheduled meeting on May 18th, will be the final vote and authorization on the ordinance to approve these CEOs and authorize their issuance. However, as we've talked about before, we have to have that final number determined prior to May 18th. We can't come, the way that system works is, on the morning of the 18th, our financial advisor will actually go to the market and negotiate the best interest rate possible on that date with, and secure a sale to investors of the bonds. And it'll be a very specific amount, and at that point, all the financial analysis and the cost must be included in the ordinance that the city council considers for adoption that evening. So we basically have this ordinance in place today, and it's a fill-in-the-blank. And we won't be able to fill in the blanks until the very day we're ready to issue the debt. So that's why we can't come to the meeting on the May 18th and think we can still change the number. If we change the number, then, then we have to restart the whole process. It undermines the entire process. So, so I'm hoping we're on the same page about that moving forward. I think it's just worth noting for the record, for everybody, that the council and staff, as was said earlier, we've engaged in numerous discussions amongst ourselves, both internal meetings and numerous public meetings about the CEOs. The council has gone out of their way to make sure that there's multiple opportunities for public input over the last three months. We, the staff's responded to all questions, all requests for information, and we've not received any more requests from council or the public. We had some good interaction last night. We were able to answer some questions, but we stand today with no more request for further discussion or deliberations on this issue. So as I showed you earlier, we've revised the CEO amount and the project list based on what my view is, what the general consensus of council is, and that that number, that the principal amount, as was shown earlier, that's currently sitting in the authorizing ordinance is twenty-three million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. So we've talked about this previously on numerous occasions. So in the end, I just can't stress enough, I guess I'm saying it over and over, we need to have this final number. We need to have this final number. If we can't agree on it tonight, we can meet multiple times between now and the 18th. But at the same time, we're moving forward. We don't necessarily need a vote or discretion, or from the council tonight, but I guess I just want the record to be clear that the staff, our whole team, is, unless we get otherwise direction from the council as a whole, that we're moving forward under this assumption that we'll be ready to vote on this issue on the 18th, and the total amount will be twenty-three million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand with the project list as listed. Now, the one thing to note on that is that would include the two-point-five million for the city hall annex. So we need to have more discussion about that. I encourage us to do that. But I'll just say, on a final note, if we don't proceed on May 18th, there's just definite operational and financial impacts for the city if we're not prepared to proceed with these projects, this financing at that date. So, so I'll be glad to circle back to anything I said or answer any questions. As I said before, I guess I'd prefer if we had a vote and got it on the record, but we don't necessarily expect that, but I just want you to know where we're headed. I think Thomas had a question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I was wondering, you know, a couple slides back, kind of the wording, that it was different for the police station versus...
This one?
Yes. You know, because you use the wording, construct, improving, renovating, demolishing, and equipping, you know, city buildings, but like the wording is kind of different with just renovation and expansion. I was just wondering why the wording is different. They seem pretty similar. It'd become, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, because we're missing, like, improving the police station, you know, like, does that limit us that we can't improve the police station? You know, I'm just wondering about...
Yeah, I guess I had some of the same questions myself, and that, this is just what our bond attorney came back to. But what I will tell you is this, this language is based on, the bond council says it should say, "Based on their understanding," she's been involved in all our conversations. The council can be more specific than this. The council can add wording to any of this section if that's the consensus of the group to do that. But again, like I said, again...
Renovation is a pretty broad term, though.
Right, and I think in the end, in renovation and the police station, the way that's stated, it did seem more important to her that we be a little more specific about that we were going to build the annex close to the existing city hall. Whereas, yeah, I just assumed it would be similar language for the city hall, but she felt pretty strongly it needed to have that language. But I think renovation, expansion gives us a lot of discretion, and it just, but at the same time, it does, it is, you were here last night and heard the discussion, the issue about, can we just say, just give us the money for city hall, and we'll decide later where to build it? You can't do that. You have to be specific. So we had to say specifically that the plan is to expand the police station and its location. Now, like we talked about, we can get into the analysis, all of that, and ultimately to determine that maybe that isn't the best location for it, and the council would have that discretion just to say, "We're going to revisit this later and not do the police station in this issue." But being more specific, I guess you're getting my point, the more specific we are, I understand it provides a lot more specificity for people to know what we want to do. At the same time, I really think the City of Elgin is in a spot now where, as much as we want to try and plan, we're still not clear on all the challenges we're going to face in the next few years. And so having the ability to make capital improvements, having a funding source like this, I think will, as much as we can leave that discretion and trust the council to do the right thing later is in everybody's best interest.
I would say that there is a difference between the city hall project and the police station project, because if we do purchase the property next door, there will be some expense to demolish the building that's there. That is included in the city hall language. But other than that little white building that is going to fall down by the time we get over there and blow on it, you know, it's not so much demolition as it is, you know, just expansion and renovation, which expansion includes construction.
Right. Now, Susie?
I agree with the reduction and the weatherizing of the water plant. Okay, so if we're, if the bond amount is going down by two million, is that going to keep the utilities from being raised?
No, the, really, the main adjustment, it will have an effect on that, and I think that's the other point we want to make clear, too, is that, as we've said over and over from the beginning, whenever we do cost estimates like this, and particularly whenever we're estimating rate impact, we're always very conservative in what those numbers are. And so we're confident, although we've talked about an eight-dollar-a-month increase for rates, we even thought that was probably a little conservative, a little, it was going to come down anyway. And certainly, by reducing that amount by a million dollars, will have that kind of effect. But that's the only utility project I think we cut from, so there's still, there's still going to be an increase, but I don't think it'll be eight dollars. And that, you're right, that'll definitely help that.
Let me, let me make a comment. I'm sorry, Susie, were you, were you done? Okay. Let me, let me make a comment. We've been hard at work on this thing, hard at work for over three months. And what, and not to repeat what the city manager said, but when we have our vote next meeting, we have to have, the staff has to have the projects that we're going to, that we're going to vote on and approve, so they can have a not-to-exceed number. So now, the question is for us as council members, we've gone over the, every one of these projects, we've gone over, really in depth. Now, the question is, do we have a problem with one? And this is the time for you as a council member to let us know. Do we have a problem with one that the majority of the council seems to have a problem with? We have the must-do, and I'm pretty sure that we all agree, the projects on the must-do really are must-do. We have the most majority, and all of those, we seem to have a general consensus that those are going to be done. So now, it boils down to the one project, which is the city hall annex, for two-and-a-half million dollars. I do want to, I do want to talk, Susie mentioned the water treatment plant. Half a million dollars for the portable generator that can be put in the truck and moved to where it's needed. That makes sense, doesn't it? So the other million dollars is going to be, we said at the time, is going to be either for a generator that we're going to buy for the water treatment plant that's going to be there, or for paying Encore to provide more power on different lines. And I hope that we, do we have any more information on that? Because to me, there's no, there's really no choice there. To me, if we're going to spend a million dollars, let's buy that piece of equipment and let's have it sitting there. Because if we have an outage, a severe, let's say, another freeze, and trees knock down one line, that doesn't mean they can't knock down two lines. And then we'd be back exactly in the same shape where we were, and we spent, you know, six hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand or whatever it was to get more power to it. I would rather spend that million dollars on the generator that's going to be there. We know it's going to be there. In either case, we have one-point-five million set aside for that. So now, really, in my opinion, and you guys tell me if it's different, it boils down to the city hall annex project. How do we feel about the city, not that we're voting, we're just expressing opinions. How do we feel about the city hall annex? Are we going to want to include that on what's going to be presented to the council at the next meeting?
So I do have a question about the city hall annex. I understand it's ten thousand square feet, is that correct? Is what we're, what we're...
Yeah, that was basically the number we used that we think we can fit on there.
How many people do we think that's... How many people do we think that's going to accommodate? How many, you know, employees and...
Well, even that kind of depends on, are we going to build a council chamber there? Are we going to build a court there? Are we going to, you know, what the first floor, I think would be used for, or if we'll just maximize office space. But we really didn't take that any further than what you just said.
My concern is that we build it and it's, like you said, we're building portable buildings all of a sudden because we didn't have enough vision to build it big enough. And so is $2.5 million in today's construction dollars, is that really enough to do something that is compatible with the campus?
Yeah, I, I guess that we thought from the beginning, the message seems to be to make this number go down and not, and not increase. So, and you heard what I said last night for us, but I'd say for the group, as it, you know, we had the one comment that we talked about already, well, the really long-term, permanent, we had 30,000 or 40,000 residents in Elgin city hall and police station is a much bigger project. And strictly from a business standpoint, that's a project, we'd probably go somewhere on the highway, buy a big piece of land, and almost build a complex out there, a building. So, our, the staff's approach here in both cases was to make a step, to build facilities that would support the city for maybe the next 10 years, and just bridge that gap to a time when we could afford something bigger more. So, so that's why in this building, we don't have a specific design as much as we're just, what could we maximize that piece of property for and get the most office space out of? Now, now, we did have the conversation last night, which I think it is a valid point to say, as time goes forward, you know, our, what we've learned in the last year, are we going to need as much, you know, brick and mortar office space? And I think that would be part of the conversation we'd have. But, but in both cases, it, it was about location. And as we talked about with the police station, a big part of that issue is, our thinking around that came from the fact that I think it came up in a council meeting to say, well, we already own that property there. And that would be a big additional expense for us to buy more property someplace. So, in both cases, it's as much about timing, I think, as anything. If, if, if that property next door wasn't available, then we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. So, so it's really about how do we do something that's affordable, we can afford now, and, and bridge that gap to a bigger time. But I'd also suggest to you, as we've talked about, we talked about last night, a part of the growth is that in four or five years, the city will have a whole different level of revenue stream with the growth, with the coming commercial development that will support that residential development. So there'll be different options available on the affordability front for the city in, in the next five to 10 years. But we're, so we're just trying to think of ways that we could bridge the two. Now, the other part too is, as we've talked about here, that, that there may be a way to do some combination under this issue. Maybe, maybe the annex next door, maybe we can use, build the police station in that location bigger and create some more office space down there, we're just not sure. But again, back to the point, providing the funding now provides us some flexibility. But the bottom line is, you're right, I think $2.5 million is just going to basically provide the minimum we'd need to get a facility there.
So I'm not advocating that we add anything to it? I'm just saying, if that's not adequate, then we need to postpone the city annex until maybe we can...
Well, I think, look, Elgin's in a spot, like, we, we make these decisions all the time for us, here's all the money we have. Let's build what we can afford. And so I think that's, that's really where our mindset is now. If we can get that much, we can build something for $2.5 million. We can build something that'll serve our immediate needs and bridge that gap to a time where we can afford something more.
I can support it. Anyone else? Specifically on the city hall annex project?
Mayor, I'll just reiterate what I said last time, just, I, I mean, I support the idea, I understand from a practical sense what Tom is saying, you know, we, we build what we can afford at this point. I think that for a growing operation, as we talked about last time, it's important to think, think down the line. Last night was interesting as well, because a couple of folks had really good questions and kind of thoughts about just what are we building for the future? And how are we looking at the future to help us understand what to have now? And those are great questions. I just think we find the balance now of what can we afford? At the same time, I think that it's probably an opportunity to continue to think ahead, and as we continue to think about big plans for the city or any kinds of projects, we should have some of those things that we heard in mind last night. But I, I support the annex now and certainly can build what we can afford at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've got kind of a, you know, on, you know, this city hall, you know, annex, that, that building seems like it would be a great bridge between, you know, like the, the library, city hall, to the downtown district. So, I think it's a good property to acquire, but it sounds like from this whole discussion, it's just like a temporary fix. I would rather use funds other than these city of obligation funds, if it's going to be a temporary, where the city could sell the building in the future and possibly make a profit off that where we couldn't with CO funds.
If I said temporary, I mean, short-term.
Right.
Yeah, when I, yeah, temporary doesn't mean temporary, it means 10 to 15 years, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, we're not talking six months, you know, one, one year, but I'm just, you know, kind of thinking down the future, if we're, you know, if this isn't the perfect solution, but, you know, if we could acquire that property at a reasonable rate, I think it would be good to actually acquire the property rather than having a vacant property between, you know, our library, our city hall, and kind of have, having this vacant section on Main Street that doesn't connect to the rest of downtown.
I, if I could just, Thomas, say that we'd have to figure out where we're coming up with that money. And that's why we have this in this issue, we can't afford, certainly with that price is in cash. And, and, and again, I would just say that we're, 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 I think, citywide, we're in a spot now where frankly, I wish we were in a better position, so we could afford to do big, long-term, elaborate planning. But, but we're under the gun here in the short run, and we have to make some, take our best shot at doing some things. Again, this isn't about future growth either. We clearly need more office space. We can't add services and staff right now because we don't have the office space. So, so if we don't provide another facility this way, then we're looking at either not having the services that we want in place, or we're going to have to start renting some private facility because we don't have another building that we can use. So, so it is kind of a, in some ways, we're kind of backed into a corner. I freely admit that, and that's what we said last night, a bigger, broader plan I agree with, but, but the pressure's coming pretty fast, and, and this is the best shot we think we have.
I, I feel like it's, it's our, too many times, if you, if you go to cities where they get big plans and they completely leave and go, and so you're creating a whole nother city in essence, whenever you kind of vacate, what is your town? And, and I will, by doing that, I feel that we still keep it in Elgin. So we don't go and buy 10 acres out on the highway, and so then everything moves that direction, and then there's no downtown left, because it's pretty much the hub, right? And so I'm in favor of moving forward, me personally, with this project.
If you guys remember my very first meeting as mayor, the, the one thing I said was, property, and especially downtown property for El, that the city owns, is gold. And, and, you know, we, we had our discussion about, about the one building in the police parking lot, and, and how important I felt that was to, for the city to make best use of it, et cetera, et cetera. So yeah, I agree, if we can stay downtown for as long as we can, if we can stay downtown, make that commitment, that's making a commitment to the city. That's making a commitment to the townspeople, and it's making a commitment to downtown.
So, if I could, Mayor, I just, Sue's point is, is a really good one that's come up in this conversation, and I think it is almost a policy issue that, that down the road or at some point in the near future, or maybe it's through this process that we'll state that policy. But do, is the city going to keep a big presence in the downtown area? I've gone through this before. I, I don't know right now. It may be this true right now, but clearly, in the near future, the center of town is going to be further west from here. So if you want to have the city facilities right in the middle of town, then it, frankly, physically, that wouldn't be here. So, it really is a, a policy issue to, for us to consider that, that if we want to keep that presence. And the other part, that, as you both said, is, the other side of that means we're not going to be able to build the ideal building if, if we're going to try to make it fit with our historic downtown. So that's part of this issue too, of, I don't think anybody'd be in favor of us bulldozing all this down, and we could sure build the ideal building then, but...
Don't get me asked.
So that, it, it is an issue. The correct business decision would be to go a new site, plan it out long-term. But, but it really is this, this issue of, we've got a very unique city hall building here next door, as we know. It's largely, frankly, dysfunctional on the inside from a business standpoint, but it, it's such a landmark here in Elgin. You know, the staff's thinking is, we, we've got to figure out a plan that'll still keep that city hall building the kind of center of our operation.
Anybody else? Okay, so when, when we come in two weeks to, to vote on these COs, it's going to be as presented, unless we have, I mean, here's your chance right now. Okay, Tom?
Well, as the mayor, I don't mean to repeat what the mayor said, so I'm not hearing anybody say they want to have another meeting, they want to have more presentation, more conversation about it. So, our direction to the staff after an I L B move forward, you'll be receiving the information as presented here this evening with those numbers and that project list. So, I appreciate the feedback. Thanks.
Okay, that's, that takes care of new business and the agenda. We have no reason to go into executive session tonight. We, going down the agenda, we come to announcements, and I, I do have a couple of announcements. First of all, I want to wish our council member, Thomas Ives, happy birthday. Happy birthday. You, you don't look 50, but I, I don't guess you want to tell us how old you are?
I'm 48.
48, okay, there you go. You're a very young-looking 48, Thomas, I'll tell you. The second announcement I wanted to make was this Sunday at the Sacred Heart Catholic Church. If you haven't had, or if you know anyone that needs their vaccination, this Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Sacred Heart Catholic Church, you can pre-register or you can just walk up and get your first shot. So that's, that's a great deal for anybody, or it's, you've got to be over the age of 18. Anybody over the age 18 that hasn't had a chance to get their shot yet and wants to get their shot, there it is, Sacred Heart Catholic Church from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This come, this Sunday, yes.
Is there already a plan in place for the follow-up there as well?
You know, I, I would imagine, because Bastrop County is still handling this, this, this will be a Bastrop County vaccination, I would imagine that that's going to be mandatory for the second shot, yeah. Anybody else have any announcements they want to make?
Amy, you got any announcements? You don't? All right, cool. There must be nothing happening then. Zip, shop, and stroll, what's that? Is it next week, Amy?
May 13th.
May 13th, okay, thank you.
That's next, is it next week? No? Yeah.
Next Thursday?
Okay. Anybody else?
I can't believe Amy didn't want to mention this.
Council, is there any more business to be discussed?
They have to come back for this last meeting, right?
What do you mean?
Because maybe, maybe, just maybe I might make cake or something for y'all.
Uh-oh. Yeah, we gonna be back? I don't need the cake. I'm a new founder, I bet it, I don't need it.
Council, is there any other business? No business, I adjourn this meeting, 8:23 p.m. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody for showing up.